Okay, the chief, in his comedic way, as he always does, brought to light that you're all here for a reason. I'm sure of it. Because Dancing with the Stars is on at this time. The whole issue with the YMCA closing, you may have heard some of the passion that I had tonight exhibited on one of the news stations. Every member of this board feels the same way as I do. The YMCA has been part of our community. Many of you have contributed to the Y when it was first built. You contributed your hard-earned dollars to that Y. I've seen your names on the plaques outside the, in the lobby. And I'm sad that we got the news about it closing. To let you know, and what I want to do at this time, before public comment, I want you to know everything that we know about this. Because I think it's important that you know what is happening. Last week, Dr. Markley had a regularly scheduled Citizens Advisory Committee. Chose that opportunity to try at that point to let you know what we knew at that time. And frankly, at that time, we didn't know much. We knew very little about what really laid ahead for us. But you came out, you came out en masse, and you're sending letters, you're sending emails. We've seen petitions, all going to the Y. And you're expressing your passion, as citizens of Raytown have. On March 1st, Mahesh and I were called, we were contacted by the YMCA. And we were advised on March 1st, Friday, March 1st, at 3:00, that they were going to be closing the Y on April 12th. They asked us to keep it quiet until they could have the courtesy of informing their own employees on March 11th, and to issue a press release on March 12th. We chose to honor that commitment because it's important. There's a number of times that we're put into situations here, many of us on the diocese and city administration, were put in a position where we're asked by citizens, as well, or business owners, to keep something in confidence because it may affect their business. Perhaps their purchase of real estate, something along that line. And we kept this in confidence. During that time, we were working on numbers. We kept it quiet because they also said we have not been able to talk to Dr. Markley yet. And we wanted Dr. Markley to hear that from the district as well. So we honored that request. I think Dr. Markley, and I think he may have said that he found out about it Wednesday, I think, of the following week. Because immediately when he heard about it, he and I were on the phone. This affects both of us, the school district and the city of Raytown. It affects us in a major way. That Y, and our athletic facilities, and all of our assets that we have, are important to our community and have been for our youth, for our seniors, and everyone in between. Again, I know it's a very passionate subject, and I'm sorry that we're having to do this, but I want you to hear the details. So, we set, we started reviewing information that was provided to us, excuse me, we asked for information as far as their financials, because we wanted to start working on this until they officially announced it. My first reaction to it, and I don't, I haven't seen Mark here, but when I talked, we got the news from Mark Hewlett and Nancy Winship, my first reaction was, why in the world would you put us in a situation on March 1st telling us you're going to close the Y on April 12th? Why would you put us, those that put this building here in the first place, our citizens that donated the property, our citizens that donated hard-earned money, why would you put us in that situation in the first place? Very graciously, they apologized, they said their board had just decided, three days ahead of that, that this was going to be happening. And they got to us as soon as they could. Okay? But it still placed us in a difficult position. I'm way off my script here. The first thing we did was we sat down with the school district. Dr. Markley came by, we met, he and I, and Mahesh, and we started talking about what we need to do. Again, this is important to the school district, important to ourselves, the city, for our citizens' sake. We've always talked about wanting a community center in this city. We've talked about it for years. I know firsthand, having designed community centers before, they typically lose money. The first year they're maybe successful, the second year they're maybe successful. They typically lose money on an annual basis. That day on March 1st, when Mahesh and I were asking questions of the Y, they told us, the current value of the property was 2.8 million. It cost them 1.2 million dollars to run the facility. They have 2.2 million dollars of deferred maintenance on that facility. And they typically run an arrears on the facility of about $150,000 a year. That's the information we got on March 1st. You add up the numbers, and it just didn't make sense to us. So during that week, and days to follow, our finance director was working with Mahesh back and forth. The Y was very, very involved with giving us information, very forthcoming with the numbers. We've seen their financial statements, we know where the numbers are, we know what the count needs to be, we know what the count was as far as membership goes. They needed to be in the neighborhood of 1,500 to 2,000 members for that Y to properly function. Today, it sits, well, last week, before it was announced, it was at about 1,000. And that's why they've been losing money over all these years. When we talked to them today, and I'll back up a little bit, so this all progressed to the point where we said, we want to have a meeting. The school board authorized Dr. Markley, their finance director, Rick Todi was there as well today, at a 2:00 meeting with the, we had David Byrd there, we had Nancy Winship there, we had Mark Hewlett from the Y there, and a couple of other senior staff that they had that were providing the financials. Our intent to that meeting was to seek an extension of time from April 12th to mid-November. The purpose of that, as we talked, simply was, we need to get our ducks in order, we need to run our business plan, to see if now is the time for us to step into a community center business. We need to figure out if that particular property makes sense to us, therefore making sense to you. We needed our due diligence to be done in that time period, and we physically can't get it done by April 12th. So we asked them, before the meeting, we said, we'd like to see this extension. They said, that's fine, we're happy to talk to you about it. When you come in, know that it's going to cost you at least $18,000 a month to extend that facility. We got the financials that supported it. We went to that 2:00 meeting today expecting to dissect that number because it seemed high to us. We got to the meeting, we were told that, in fact, the number's now in the neighborhood of $40,000 a month, rather than 18, because in this past week, 300 members dropped out of the Y. Okay? Now, and our response was, how do you blame them? You put us in a situation, how do you blame them? We talked about PR issues, we went through that up and down, and we were there for an hour and a half. We never got them to budge off of it being in the neighborhood of approaching $40,000 a month to keep this thing running. And anything that came up above that, we were going to be on the hook for. In other words, if more people left, and their cost of doing business went up, we were on the hook for that. So we listened, and we contemplated, and we bantered some things back and forth, and frankly, expressed our passion and displeasure. Face got a little red a couple times today. But we asked them to leave the room, and when they did, we talked with our partners at the school district in this matter, and we said, really, we've got nothing. They haven't offered us anything, they've not moved anything, they're asking for the city of Raytown to write a blank check to the YMCA to run a facility that has been losing money at the tune of $220,000 a year, for the last five years at least, on an average. We looked at ourselves, how in the world can we ask the members of our board, how can Dr. Markley ask the members of his board to write a blank check to the YMCA under those circumstances? So we said, we called them back in the room, and we said, thank you for your time, we appreciate it, we don't appreciate being treated the way we've been treated, you've done us wrong, it's not fair, but you're not moving on this negotiation, we cannot write you a blank check, we're done, thank you very much. They advised us that, in fact, there would be a board meeting, YMCA board meeting on the 28th, I believe it is. Mahesh, do you remember the date, 28th? At which time, the subject may come up again. And we said, that's fine, but you haven't given us a number, we're not going to write you a blank check. If nothing's on the table, this meeting's over. So we adjourned the meeting and went our separate ways. Again, it's very disappointing. We heard today that for five years, they've been losing money. The last two years, they've been looking for ways to generate more revenue, more membership, drives for membership. I've not heard anything until March 1st that the YMCA was in trouble. And I don't know of anybody that has. Now, that's a mystery to me, that we should be treated that way here in the city of Raytown. You should be treated that way, it's not right. Don't tell me that you folks would go to the YMCA at Linwood or downtown for the services you've been getting here in Raytown. A 15-year-old building with a 2.2 million dollar deferred maintenance plan, doesn't make sense. So here we are, it's up to the Y, if they want to come back, and the board wants to review it, they can. But at this point in time, I got to tell you, it doesn't make business sense to me, it didn't make business sense to those that were in the room today from our side, and we don't have anything to take to the board. We don't have good news for you that we're able to save the Y. We're going to continue to look, our eyes and ears are open, because we need these facilities. Supersplange, used to be where the swimmers trained. Supersplange is where my kids learned to swim. All of that, we have in our community, have had for years. The biggest part about that facility is it's an indoor aquatics facility, that's nice. There are meeting rooms there, meeting rooms that we have to pay for, the city has to pay for to use. Anyway, a lot of rambling, and Brenda, I didn't follow anywhere close to the script, please forgive me for that. But I wanted you to know where we're at on that. It's not something that's good for us, but it's important to me, this board, and the administration, that you hear the facts on this matter. We're receptive to questions you've got, I'm going to open the floor up to public comments, I need to go through some actual paperwork so that my attorney will be happy with this. We have a list of people that have signed up to speak. You're allowed five minutes for each of your comments. In fairness to the number of people, and those who are reviewing this in the audience from home, the room is packed, and there are probably people out in the lobby out there. So I would ask that you be respectful to those in the room, I really ask that you be respectful to us, this is a difficult decision for us as well. Be kind, be respectful as Raytown people are. Five minutes for each speaker, if you're just repeating what somebody else has said, unless you're necessarily hungry for camera time, you might rethink that. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, and you advise us of who that group is ahead of time, you can have up to 10 minutes, depending on the numbers in that group. So again, I ask you to be respectful, you've got five minutes to talk, please be gentle with us. First up is Gary Croning. And on deck, if you will, will be Corey Prochasty, and forgive me, I'm sure I didn't pronounce that right. Gary, you're first, and then Corey is second. Following Corey will be Timothy Curry. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and for the city council, to hear my short comment, and being the first speaker, it's kind of, but thank you for your concern and deep desire to continue a community center in Raytown. I've used the Y, this particular Y, in the last 10 years, and in large part, as an occupational therapist, providing therapeutic services to children with varying levels of abilities and disabilities. And what I've seen is, is that these kids become a part of your community. The people that attend the Y know the kids, talk to them, and then I also see other people with disabilities there at the Y. And it's become the venue in Raytown for these people to be out in the open, and be a part of your community, and be equals among you all. So it'd be good for you to continue to explore a community center, despite what the board or the YMCA decides to do. And so, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. And just for the record, I have his address, it's 5207 West 69th Street Prairie Village. And I'm going to ask that, Corey, you start us off by giving your address at the podium, and then Timothy Curry, you're on deck.
Good evening, I'm Corey Proaska, I'm a senior at Raytown High School, my address is 10534 East 45th Place, Raytown, Missouri. I'm currently a senior at Raytown High School, like I said, I've been a part of the swimming water polo team, representing Raytown for the past four years. I'm here tonight because, like many of you, I'm extremely concerned about the recent announcement regarding the decommissioning of the Richard Singery YMCA. As many of you already know, that that is the current training facility for the Raytown Raytown South boys and girls swim teams. The water polo team that has held six straight Kansas City championships also uses that pool for practice daily. This team has begun branching out to other cities such as St. Louis and Columbia to increase awareness of this program. Along with an increased awareness of the program, it also draws attention to the city of Raytown. But this task is impossible to complete if the program is cut short, and that is why I stand before you now. But I digress. I'm unhappy, my coach is unhappy, my peers, the 716 people in the social media group, and the 370-plus supporters that have signed an online petition to keep the facility running are unhappy, and for countless reasons. At the recent citizens committee meeting, I was informed by Dr. Alan Markley, that he and other RQS board members would be attending a meeting with the Greater Kansas City YMCA board, requesting a three-to-six-month extension of the closing deadline. This was fantastic for news, for me and my team. I was overjoyed to hear that I may be able to finish my last water polo season in my career. I soon realized, however, that this wasn't a solution, but rather an infernal fix to that problem. It was a way to prolong our inevitable defeat. I do realize that the YMCA is a private corporation, and you guys have no jurisdiction over what they do, but you do have jurisdiction over what that building is and what it can become. If any of you attended the citizens meeting, you know exactly what that building means to our community, and maybe even to some of you personally. If not you personally, I'm certain someone close to you has a child in that daycare, or a center nephew that plays basketball every night to stay off the streets and prevent crime. If you really think about it, I'd be willing to bet that there are only a handful of people in this town that don't have any connection to that YMCA. I'm asking you, pleading with you, to do everything in your power to keep that natoryum filtering water, to keep the smiles on those kids' faces as they play basketball every single night at 6:30, and to keep the Silver Sneakers walking on that track on a daily basis. I am confident that any forthcoming concerns you may have can ultimately be abolished with the help of your community, all you have to do is ask. I've accepted the fact that the building is deteriorating at a rate unexpected, and it may cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, like you said, in repairs to keep it operational. But through fundraising efforts, the attention of powerful officials sympathetic to our cause, and the mindset of we can do this, I believe that the city can come together for perhaps the successful former Raytown citizens such as Alden Smith, Tyronne Lune, or Maurice Mitchell, that have grown in huge popularity and stature, and hold this as our own. It is time to lay down our anger and frustrations, and begin rebuilding what will soon be lost. Despite the challenges that lay before us, I believe in my heart that the city can come together and do what it did 15 years ago to make this Y a reality in the first place. If that corporation is willing to leave behind its faithful members of over 15 years, and hundreds of employees that rely on these jobs as sustenance for their families, then they don't deserve our commitments, they don't deserve our sweat, and they certainly don't deserve our accomplishments. I know from firsthand experience that all the swim teams and the youth of RQS are willing to step up and fight for what we love. That story is noted for anyone else in this community. We want a center, one to call our own, one we can make personal, and I think it's time for us to embrace a city that is the community, rather than one that the community uses. I think it is time that we put more value into a family than a business. Thank you.
Well done, Corey, thank you. Timothy Curry is up, and Bill Hammond is on deck.
I live at 12501 East 59th Street. Of course, it's kind of no man's land out here, you know, in the middle of everywhere. I use the Y for my health as a member of Silver Sneakers. It is through an insurance program, and that may be part of the problem, I do not know. I just know that this is my hope for my future because of my health, and this, I do not have the means to go elsewhere. This is a life-or-death decision they put before me, whether they've realized it or not. There is a large group of us over there that are in this same similar position. You know, it's not a matter of just being there for fellowship or whatever, it's because it's being there for our grandkids, for, you know, their grandkids, you know, being around, you know, it's not just a Y to some of us. It's our life. Now, I am one of those, well, I don't know if I'm the only one or not, but I started a movement to, or started an effort to involve the health, the, excuse me, the healthcare profession in this, in going to my primary care doctor. On board, big time. I went to a second doctor's office, and some of you people may know it. Nevada Lee, long time here in the community. She's on board, big time. And I think if we can pursue certain other avenues, we could garner support to possibly keep this open. You know, if the Y would give us a chance, you know, I mean, there's a lot of AARP members here, you know? This community is an older community. I mean, we have to be honest, we're surrounded. You have no way to expand a lot of growth here, you know? And I think they forget that, in that they're supposed to be towards the youth, but you know, without us, there wouldn't be any youth, would there?
Okay, Bill Hammond, and Anita Neville is on deck, followed by Larry Shiner.
Mr. Mayor, it's Hammond.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor Bauer, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. You're probably wondering why I'm here, because none of you know me. Actually, I'm here to introduce you to the joys of Hamway, so.
Nice.
Well, they always said, when you, in public speaking, you want to tell a joke first, well, that didn't go very well.
I try that, it rarely works.
I'm from the Independence YMCA. I'm a 24, my wife and I, Carolyn, are 24-year members of the Independence YMCA. We found out a week ago, and I've been through rage, anger, we were in Dallas, it's probably a good thing I was in Dallas, that far away. We are organizing a group called SaveMyY.com. We're going to take certain actions, to all passive, of course, to bring this to the home of these people. They've brought this decision into our lives personally. We want to take this to them personally. So I urge you all, it's, we all know that this is a direct violation of the YMCA mission statement, not just the local mission statement, but also the national mission statement. And I believe it is a case where they're discriminating against people of age, as the gentleman said, people of lower income, and people of lower social status. And it's all about the money, they're going where the money's at. My wife told me I should tell you this. We found it out today at Kansas City, Kansas, Y, that the property that they want to build the new YMCA on is owned by United Missouri Bank. Guess who has a board member, which bank has a board member on the YMCA Association Board? We also found out that J.E. Dunn Construction evaluated the Kansas City, Kansas, Y, and the new building site for the Y. And guess who's on the Board of Directors for the Y? Bill Dunn. So we smell a rat. We couldn't agree more with you, Mr. Mayor, that it's time for us to take a stand. I'll leave some of these flyers, we're going to take some actions. We need your help, we think that we can change the board's mind if we all act in concert. Our goal, Alder Woman, I guess is how you call it, Melson, she said she liked proactive things. Here's what our goal is. Our goal is to convince the YMCA of Greater Kansas City to keep all three of these Ys open for a minimum of three years. In that time, we will each undertake a capital campaign to raise funds for the deferred maintenance. And by the way, the members of the Y didn't defer this maintenance, it was the managing people down at 31st and Broadway that did this deferred maintenance. So, back on focus here, we want to keep each Y open for three years minimum. We want each Y to undertake its own capital campaign to raise funds for the deferred maintenance. We also want each one of these Ys to go into an intensive membership drive, which, of course, they've made much worse now because of this announcement. The results of that capital campaign would go into the Truman Heartland Foundation, and they would be specifically used only for the individual units of Independence, Raytown, and Kansas City, Kansas, it's the only way the money could go, it won't go to general revenue downtown. In addition to that, we want every Y facility in the city to have a voting member on the Board of Directors. As of this point, nobody, no members of the individual Ys are on the board, they're all corporate types. So that's our plan for the future, and we urge you to come out and support it. You can go to www.SavemyY.com, or you can, if you don't have access to the internet, you can call 866-7885. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Well, before Anita says anything, I need to probably do a little bit of house cleaning here also, or housekeeping, in that, know that the practice of this board is typically not to engage in conversation with the speaker, so it don't, if you're going to ask us a question, I'm sorry, but our practice is to not engage in that. We want to hear from you tonight, so don't think we're just sitting here like bumps on a log. We just make it a practice to not engage, at this point in time, in the conversation with the speaker. So Anita, forgive me for doing that bit of house cleaning. Larry Shiner's on deck, followed by Henry Jazz. Thank you, Anita.
My name is Anita Neville, I live at 9213 East 52nd Street, Kansas City. And I just hope I'm a voice tonight for many people, I know a lot of people here tonight, and in fact, have grown up in this community from a baby, so. I went to Raytown High School, and actually, Jim, Mr. Jim Azier was my history teacher, and I know Joe, Mr. Joe Kramer from church. But also, I know Mark Hewlett from when he was in the desk there at Raytown Y. And right before, we got, I got to know him before we went as missionaries to Belarus, as our family went two years to learn Russian and minister to people there. But I, the Y has been like a second home to me, I've gotten to know the people who have been there for, since the Y opened, the Raytown Y opened 15 years ago. And I started going because I was so overweight that I really needed help, and so I just committed to go early in the morning, 6:00 a.m. every morning, and although I did that for many years, I was not able to get the weight off, even though I built up strength. And through the Y challenges that they have had in the last five years, I've able, was able to lose 75 pounds through those. I have been inspired by those, and have started ministry through my church to reach other people, to help Len lose weight also. So, the Y is more than just going there, working out, it's not a 24-hour fitness, it has all ages, and we're all just like a family, a lot of times, we have people around the, after they work out, just around in the lobby, and drinking coffee and chatting about what's the news, or what's going on, and so, it's so much more than that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming out. Larry Shiner, if I got that pronounced correct, Henry Jazz is on deck, followed by Lee Moreland. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak with you tonight, and I've already heard a lot of the things mentioned that I was going to talk about, but I was born at a very early age in Kansas City, Missouri, but I grew up in Springfield. I had two sons, and they were both heavily involved in YMCA activities, whether it be soccer leagues, basketball leagues, whatever it was, they were involved in it through the Y. So I have a lot of gratitude. So, I have a lot of gratitude for the opportunity that they had to be involved with the YMCA programs, okay? I am a Vietnam veteran. I was subjected to Agent Orange, but fortunately, I do not have it. But I'm with the VA now, and they are treating me because I have the potential of losing both of my feet, okay? So, one of the plans that they had told me about was to walk as much as I could every day. I became a member of the Y, and I walked six miles a day at the Y. And for anybody, well, over six miles, but for anybody that wants to count it, that's 110 laps around that track. And by the time I get home, I'm dizzy. You take that Y away from me, and I have the opportunity to walk out on the streets that I live on, where there's traffic, and I don't think I want to do it when it snows. And that's one thing the Y offers me that the street can't, and that's protection from the weather. My sons both have a very Christian background, and I, I don't take the credit for all that. I take the credit for their involvement in activities that the Y presented our family to have when we lived in Springfield. And I see the same thing with the kids that I see when I'm walking around that track. I see the same thing with adults, it's an opportunity for them to get their exercise and remain healthy. And I hate to see a city such as Raytown with the communities that are around it have to close that facility. I just, I just think it's, it's, it's going to be a sad day, and I hope that some of the things that have been mentioned by all these other eloquent speakers, which I am not, I hope that some of that hits a chord, and we form some kind of a committee, or some kind of a operation to save our Y. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Henry, you're next. Lee Moreland is on deck, followed by Tony Taylor. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and counsel that I can talk to you. I've been a Raytown resident for the last 44 years. I live at 7621 Inglewood. I've been also almost at long with the Y, first of 75th Street in West Ridge, and then 350. I almost can say the same, but the gentleman's has told here before. I worked out when I was working during nights, and the last three, four years, when I developed diabetic too, and had about 200, 300 sugar. I retired in 99, in July 99. From that day on, I spent six days a week. The first three, four years, I walked one hour on a treadmill, about four miles, auto machines, yoga, silver sneaker, every day, not once in a while, every day. Within a year, my sugar was normal. Four, five years ago, we had a ice storm, if you remember, I tried to pick up my mail, and it fell. The doctor examined me, and I had my lower vertebrae move a quarter inch to the right. These suggested I need an operation. The first day I did, went into warm pool, and stayed there an hour to two hours every day, the last four, five years. And within two years, my back pain was gone, except my numbness on the right side. Now, I got a letter two weeks ago, telling me I can go to another facility 10, 20 miles away. I'm 79 years old. There's no way I can do that, go six o'clock in the morning, some 20 miles away, when I got in my neighborhood for the last 44 years. It's very sad what I heard, and I hate to say to kill me, but that's what it is. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, Lee Moreland is up, Tony Taylor's on, you're going to pass? Okay, thank you, sir. Tony Taylor is up, and that puts Pam Harrison Clark on deck. Welcome, Tony.
Good evening. My name is Tony Taylor, I live at 9051 East 66 Terrace in Raytown, Missouri. And Mr. Mayor, and the Board of Aldermen, I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this evening, and I was extremely troubled by the recent announcement of the Y closing, as many in this room were extremely distraught. And to move along, I am here to represent a group of individuals that are unable to represent themselves, they're unable to have a voice here this evening, the way that so many of us have walked up here to represent ourselves. And I was very much impressed, a very close family friend of ours, Kathy Leclair, wrote an extremely poignant editorial in the Kansas City Star. And Kathy Leclair was actually my son, Jonah Taylor, his physical therapist, and began that physical therapy in a swimming pool at a YMCA in the late 90s, early 2000s. Today, my son is 13 and a half, he's a student at Northwood School here in the Raytown School District. We also have the pleasure of adopting a child with Down's Syndrome, who is at New Trails Early Learning Center here in the Raytown School District. We're dedicated Raytown citizens, taxpayers of this community, and not only our children, but there are many families that have children with special needs, that utilize the services and the facilities of the Raytown YMCA. If my son were able to speak, although he's nonverbal with autism, if he were able to speak and could be here tonight, he could share with you the impact the YMCA as a community here in Raytown has had on his life. The YMCA is not an alternative for our family for exercise, although it is for many people in the community. It's not an alternative for health and wellness and fitness, as it is for so many in the community. It is each of those things, however, for our family, it goes much further than that, and is truly a refuge for our family. It's a refuge for my son, where he is welcomed with high fives and smiles from the staff on a regular basis. It's a refuge for my daughter, who's Down's Syndrome, and loving nurturing spirit from that Down's diagnosis, where that is actually nurtured by the community that's supporting her, by those, my children have had swim lessons in the YMCA, they've had members of the Raytown High and Raytown South High swim teams that have supported them, that the community, if anyone said Jonah, there's a lot of people in this room that would know my son, simply because of his attendance at the YMCA. And for him, and for so many individuals, because our family's connected with the disability community, there are group homes, there are other students from Raytown that, from Northwood, that do not have a voice. They could not travel here this evening, they could not stand in front of this podium, they could not form a sentence, however, their lives are impacted by the services and the facilities of the community. And probably the very first question our family asked when we heard the news of the Raytown YMCA closing is, how can an organization who prides itself on supporting a community, support a community that does not have a presence within that community? And I believe there are many, many families, not only the group homes, not only all ages that are represented here this evening, and among the membership of the Y, but there are families and multiple groups of individuals that are represented by each of the memberships. So, when we look at the membership total, the impact the YMCA has on the community is much far-reaching beyond the membership count. And I just, I'm here to just share the impact, because again, there are those without a voice, that are unable to share that this evening, and I thank you very much for your time.
Well, well stated, Tony, thank you. Got Pam Harrison Clark, followed by Linda Myers on deck. Betty Loveland will follow. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I'm representing my father, Bob Harrison, and he's been a, him and my mom have been, lived here in Raytown for over 56 years. They've been members of the Y when there was a YW here. My brother and I grew up in the Raytown schools, we were both on the swim team, and we participated in that program. We both had Jim Azier as a coach at one point in our lives, whether it was through the Raytown Swim Club, well, that's what it was through, because we both went to South. And my brother lives in Oklahoma City, and he's lived there for 26 years. He reads the Kansas City Star every day. When he saw this in the paper, he emailed me right away, and the next thing was an email to Jim Azier, you know? And I emailed the Y right away, because my father was diagnosed with diabetes, and once he joined the Y, he lost a lot of weight, and he's been able to maintain that and keep that under control. And everybody said a lot here, that the Y has meant a lot. I'm obviously concerned about the swim programs at the schools, you know, because that, that was a very important part of my life, you know? Even though I don't live in the community anymore, I'm here all the time, okay, and supporting Raytown and the community. And I'd just like to say, you know, my brother brought up an idea, he said, you know what? I would volunteer to teach swim lessons. He would come up here from Oklahoma for a whole week, and I bet we can find a lot of people in Raytown that would be willing to donate their time too, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda Mal, Linda Myers, and Betty Loveland is on deck. I hope I pronounced that right. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Linda Myers, I live at 6234 Moats. I've been a lifetime member of the Raytown community, which is in excess of 50 years now. My husband and I chose to stay and raise our children in the Raytown community, it was important to us. My mother graduated from Raytown High School, I'm proud to say that my husband and I both did, and our oldest son has already graduated. We have another son that's a sophomore, and so, we're carrying that tradition on, so we're three generations of Raytown High School graduates, and we're very proud of that. I, I'm kind of disappointed to hear that things didn't go well with the meeting with the Y. And I'm hopeful that the city obviously can see how important it is to so many people that we have some place for everyone to go. A community center means so much to the community, and for the senior citizens, for our youth, the programs that they are able to, a community center can do, and our swim teams, which is near and dear to my heart. Both of my sons are swimmers, my oldest son graduated, was a swimmer for four years, he also was an assistant coach to Coach Azier for one of, one season. My, my younger son is a sophomore swimmer, has been to state last year, and so, we're looking forward to a good junior, senior season with him. So, it's extreme, extremely important to me that this community has a resource and has a place for these swimmers to go. It's a huge tradition, the swimming program, and I think it's so important, and the first thing I thought when I found out that the Y was closing is, please don't cancel, don't, you know, get rid of the swim program, it's so important to the youth of our community. And so, I, you know, really, the main thing I wanted to impress and share my thoughts were on, was that I think it's very important that we look at this as, try to look at this as a positive way as we possibly can, and perhaps we can see something good come out of this. Obviously, the community has come together, which is really nice to see. I've lived here long enough to have seen many changes in our community, and just as we start to have steps forward, and we start to see things turning around, the Raytown Plaza's starting to look better, some developments along 50 Highway, it really breaks my heart to think that that building's going to sit there empty, along with the car dealerships and the other things. We can't let our city go backwards any farther. We've got to rally together and do what's best for our community, and maybe this is the time that we put our heads together and do what's best, and come up with a plan for a community center, whether it's that building, whether it's something we do on our own, but I think it's important, and I think these people here, and the citizens of our community, are speaking loudly. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Linda. Betty's up next, followed by her husband.
No, he will not.
He will not follow you?
He will not.
All right, Jerry, Betty has spoken.
I'm the one that doesn't.
We know who's got, I'm just leaving it at that. Thanks for that, thanks for the levity, Betty, we needed that. Thanks for the levity, we needed that.
I wasn't planning on standing up here talking, when I signed in, I thought we was everybody signing in, but I'm glad I did.
Don't feel like you have to say anything.
I will, because it made me mad last Monday.
All right.
We had a meeting at the Y, and I think if I could have got ahold of Mark Hewlett, I would have strangled him right then and there. Why I'm saying this, I have been with the YWF years ago, then we went to the YM, and then I have been with the YM on 350 ever since it opened up. I'm an instructor, teaching arthritis and also swimming. And I'm sitting here looking, or standing here looking at all, lot of these senior citizens, which is in our class. If it isn't for them doing the exercise and helping him, I've had two artificial knees, I've had people, the orthopedic doctors send people to the Y to get in and do the exercise, and I hate to see the Y give up. And thank goodness, we got Coach Azier, he is very, very great for our kids. I'll give you a plug. And actually, the, really, I do, but the one, I cannot think his name, the first one that stood up here and talked, that man has got the patience of Job. He works with these young kids. The smile that's on these kids' faces when they get through in that water, and even the older adults, or even the older kids that comes in and they work, he works with them, and it's great. And I hate to see the Y to go down. I hate to tell you, I'm one of the oldest instructor there, and I'm proud of it. But the most thing, is the most important, is seeing our senior citizen getting in there with the silver splash, which we have in the water too, and also, they do on land. So, is any way that we can all pull together and keep the Y, we need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Phyllis, Phyllis Miller, you're on, you're up, and on deck is her cohort in crime, Woody Whitman.
Well, you're seeing me walking, and if it wasn't for the Y, I wouldn't be walking even this well. If I get in the water, I could beat every one of you, but out in the land, you can beat me. I don't have a piece of paper, but I don't need one, if you know me, you know I can talk. I do want to say one thing, someone mentioned insurance, and maybe that's one of the problems, it isn't a problem. I have on and off insurance with Coventry, sometimes they cover, sometimes they don't. When they did cover, they paid more than I did. They pay for each visit, and I don't know exactly how much, and they didn't tell me. But if you do go there with insurance, it's not free, the Y makes out very well, so that's not a consideration. I do want to say that I'm glad I'm in Raytown tonight, and not in Washington, D.C., because I think we have people here that can work together with the Y or without them. What I've seen of the Y, I've been there eight years, worked, in fact, Betty was my instructor for almost seven of those years. And what I've seen with the Y, the deferred maintenance is very obvious. They painted the pool several years ago, closed it down for a couple of weeks, put some kind of paint on the bottom, and within a month or two, it was crumbling. That's just one thing they did. And they used to have pipes in the ceiling, you know, this is deferred maintenance, they admitted that. When they admit that, that means that the price isn't solid, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I wouldn't tell you, I had deferred maintenance on my house when I sold it, because that would not bring the right price, would it? So, the insurance part is there. Now, any of you have, how many people here have never been in the building?
Careful. Phyllis?
You wouldn't do them.
If I can keep any kind of quorum here, I'd like to.
Okay.
Please don't...
Okay. I would like to invite everyone in this room and anyone that's watching it to walk up there, to go in there in the next... before the 12th and visit the Y and tell them you want a tour because most of us don't know what's in there, right? There are meeting rooms that I know the city of Raytown paid the Y money to build those rooms so that they would be there for us because we didn't have a community center. I've been through at least three community center drives that never happened. This looks to me like one thing that maybe with a building right there in the ground, that maybe it would work and I hope that everyone will work together on it because there's a lot of cities around that have them and they're a lot smaller than we are. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phyllis. While Woody is strolling to the podium, Steve Cushing is on deck.
A lot of very good things have been said this evening already. I have just a few points to bring up. My name is Woody Whitman. I live at 7001 Lake Shore Drive in Raytown. I did some checking. There are at least eight cities surrounding Raytown that have community centers, including Grandview, Belton, Independence, two community centers in Lee's Summit, North Kansas City, Green Valley, Liberty, and now Sugar Creek. That small little town of Sugar Creek just purchased a building and they are going to have a community center at that location. Now Liberty is the same population as the city of Raytown. They have a community center and it's for all ages. This is what we need in our town and this will also be an added incentive to young couples to move to Raytown if there is a center for their growing families. Senior citizens have desperately needed a place to congregate and develop fellowship. They've been able to do some of that at the Y and that needs to continue. And if for some reason the Y will not work with us, I think they need to give us the building. It's mostly our money that went into the Y and it wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the residents of Raytown and the Green family that donated the land. And I want to remind you all that 38% of the residents of Raytown are over the age of 50 and they have the very highest rate for voting at the polls, especially on Election Day. Thank you for your time.
Steve Cushing, followed by Ms. Malali.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Aldermen, ladies aldermen. I live at 5409 Hedges, Raytown, Missouri. I'd like to say I remember the Y on 75th Street and on 63rd Street. I learned to swim on 63rd Street, matter of fact. I broke my leg a while back and on the advice of Mr. Azier, I got into the pool immediately. I've kept my strength up and kept going. I've heard a lot mentioned already, so I won't touch on it. The last lady here had a very important point, though, that I wanted to stress on. The younger families as well as the older people. Raytown is growing. Raytown is turning around. This would be a major asset if Raytown could acquire the Y, whether it be the school district or the city. The Y has done something, in my opinion, that is very, very bad. My boys learned to swim there. Like I said, I learned to swim there. They played soccer for the Y. But those... all those people that have canceled their memberships, yes, we canceled our memberships. There's a reason for that. Why would we keep giving money to the Y when they just turned around and stabbed us in the back? Now, we pay taxes for everything and I know and I'll admit it, I don't like taxes, but we need them for our public safety, for our fire department, whatever, the city, the maintenance. But why not a tax, an eighth of a cent, a quarter cent? I don't know. Put it up for a vote. Let the citizens decide. And like the gentleman said before, if we can get that extension to keep the Y open for a period of time, such as for the school district and people like myself and the seniors or anybody that enjoys the Y, it doesn't matter. If we can get an extension, put it on the ballot, figure out what is a fair tax for it and buy the Y. Like I say, they've cut their ties with me. My boys, my family, everybody. I'm very, very sad. In their mission statement, when you read the bottom of it, that means nothing. That means absolutely nothing. Because what they printed right there, and I had it memorized the other day, now I'm at a blank, but it means nothing. Zero. Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve.
I hope we can work out something.
Ms. Malali, followed by Kathy Leclaire, please. And that's... Kathy is the last... oops, I got another list. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. I live at 6417 Proctor. At age seven, at seven years old, my daughter swam on a swim team that used the Y. She is now 22 years old. All three of my children have swam on the high school swim team. One is a freshman at the high school this year and he has three more years yet to be on the team. He is currently on the water polo team that also meets at the Y and if it closes, the water polo, they'll be done for the year. We are a big swim family. I've been a member of the Y for the past 19 years. I was there... I was there when they opened up 15 years ago at the new facility. Usually I attend three to four times a week for exercise classes or to work out on my own. In all these years, I have made many friendships. There are many that I don't know them by name but enjoy seeing their faces and chatting with them. If you're gone from the Y for a while, people will notice they truly are concerned about you. I have an older gentleman that I've... that has helped me for the past several years, trained for different events. I will miss his smiling face and getting my nightly hug. It is not just about the people using the facility. It's also about the people who work there. There are six people... There are six people that depend on the Y as their full-time job. It employs 80 to 90 people in which 25 to 30 of those are youth. These are people that are like family. They know what is going on in each of our lives. Sure, we could probably find another place to exercise where you just go from one machine to another without the personal feel and the comfort that the Y gives. There will be no sounds of the kids playing basketball or the laughter of the very young kids doing their fun activities on the basketball court. There'll be no encouraging words from your fellow fitness friends to push harder. There will be no senior citizens gathered to attend their Silver Sneakers class and set to chat over a cup of coffee, offering words of wisdom. To lose this Y would leave a huge hole in our community and even a bigger one in the lives of our citizens. Thank you.
Kathy Leclaire is on board and Tom Day is on deck. Welcome in.
Good evening, Mayor and the Board. My name is Kathy Leclaire. I'm at 5135 Northern Avenue. That's actually in Kansas City, but my taxes go to the Raytown School District. I live about six blocks from here. Tony said that I was... I used to be a physical therapist. Currently, I am a disabled United Methodist minister. I'm a cancer survivor. The treatment led to a severe arthritic condition and I have had 13 orthopedic surgeries with more to come. I moved over here. I've lived in Kansas City my whole life, but I decided to buy a house and moved to this area specifically because of the Independence and Raytown Ys. My house is almost smack in between the middle of them and now both of those places are looking to close. I have focused on Raytown for a few reasons. One, as we talked about, it's newer. Another thing, we've talked about water exercise, but what not everybody realizes is that the Raytown Y has the only pool that I have found in Kansas City that is both a warm water pool and it has zero step entry. That is really important, especially when you're recovering from a surgery, to not have to go down steps to get in the water and have a temperature, for me, that doesn't just aggravate my arthritic issues. It's not just Silver Sneakers. It's not just kids and swim teams, you know? I'm 49 years old and I'm one of those right in the middle of all that. I still need a place to go. It's the only thing that keeps me moving. When I looked at where could I go otherwise? We mentioned Lynwood and Cleaver YMCA's, you know? I did a little bit of research, looked at some independent crime websites. Those two zip codes compared to Raytown's zip code has about seven to 10 times the rate of crime and that's in crimes against persons, which is about three or four different things. People have mentioned the Henley Aquatic Center. I looked them up today. There was one water aerobics class listed Tuesday and Thursday, 8:00 AM. People with severe arthritic conditions do not function at 8:00 AM and I'm one of them. So there's not a lot of options and it's not a warm water pool and it doesn't have zero step entry. The Blue Springs Y is probably my best option. It's a 28-mile round trip from where I am instead of a seven-mile trip. The deferred maintenance issue, I appreciate your clarification on the amount. You know, everybody has said and it's true, $2.2 million in 15 years speaks of negligence by the Y. Flat out. They say they're ready to close it down because of that and I think about it being 15 years old. The house I just bought just turned 40. Not ready to close it down. This body's broken and is almost 50 and I'm not ready to close it down either. One thing I wanted to point out about a community center before I close. The only questions I have or concerns that I have about that is that if it is a Raytown-based community center, my address is Kansas City, so I'm going to be paying non-resident fees. And there are a lot of people in Independence and Eastern Kansas City that are going to fall into that problem of having to pay more money because we don't have the right address. Ultimately, this closing, everybody knows it's not about families. It's about money. The YMCA is leaving a less affluent community to cater to bankers and lawyers and financial folks and doctors and I love all those people, but they're leaving us to cater to them. The East Side communities deserve the same accessibility to a YMCA as our downtown residents. Please, please help us keep our YMCA open. Thank you.
And Tom Day is the last speaker I have on my sign-up sheet. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of our aldermen, I'd like to thank you for the foresight in providing this community an opportunity to express our concerns regarding the potential, and I say potential, closure of the Raytown YMCA. In addition, we want to thank you for each of you being in attendance. The sudden and unexpected announcement of the Raytown Y closure did not truly address adequately the economic, social, and political needs of the greater Kansas City area. It was a shortsighted response to internal pressure from greater financial management responsibility from the philanthropic community, which supports the Greater Kansas City YMCA. The Greater Kansas City YMCA is not membership-supported. It's foundation-supported by philanthropic interests. They attempt to make residents gain ownership of the YMCA. In order to raise funds for the downtown YMCA, the executive staff of the YMCA looked for a means to show their desire to be good stewards for the philanthropic interests. Economic data was compiled to support their recommended decision to close the three YMCA's. The compiled data did not address the social or political consequences of the decision, only the economic short-term rewards to be gained by closing Independence, Raytown, and Kansas City, Kansas. The core metropolitan area from State Line to east to 435, from the Missouri River south to Jackson County is an economically depressed area struggling to maintain its standard of living. Families within that core are moving to adjacent areas based on the American dream to increase their standard of living. This movement has created a... pardon me. This movement has created a solidly depressed core where violence and real estate values have declined due to the increased standard of living. The expansion west of that core is blocked by State Line and basically north by the Missouri River. Therefore, only an expansion to the east into Sugar Creek, Independence, and Raytown are possible. The decision by the Greater Kansas City YMCA has effectively created a barrier to this expansion by a lack of community access to its citizens. In the past, the YMCA has maintained a mission of providing community center support to the bottom 40% of the economic strata. Its attempted withdrawal from the Independence and Raytown area will create a void of community centers from 435 to 291 on the east side of the metro area. Its mission will only be filled in the extremely depressed core or the wealthy 60% west and north of the Kansas City metropolitan area. It behooves the philanthropic interests of the Kansas City area to reconsider the social and political impact of this apparent oversight. They need to work with the communities of Independence and Raytown to ensure that a YMCA continues to fill its mission of providing entertainment, a sports venue, as well as a community center in this vital area of the greater metro area. Without the support of the YMCA, the communities will develop increasing gang behavior and real estate decline. A partnership with the YMCA, the city, the schools, and the business interests of this area is a vital necessity to continue the mission of the YMCA to provide a safe haven for wholesome community activities. I heard your comment on TV about the loss of membership and its impact on the YMCA. I myself went to the website, determined how far it was to the true YMCA that they want to transfer me to. It was going to cost me $17.50 in gas alone each week. Four times that... that's my... Four times that is $60. Doubles the membership cost just to transfer a membership. And they don't even mention that to you. They just say, "Well, you lost 300 members." They're not interested. No, it's not that they're not interested. I don't think they feel betrayed. I think it's a backpocket issue of how much it's going to cost to travel there. So...
But you're wrapping up, right, sir?
Yes, I've got two more sentences, basically.
I'm going to get yelled at because I gave you too much time.
The focus on this is not the water program. The focus is on a community center that has to be maintained in this area. I'm asking and I'm pleading with the leaders of the economic, social, and political organizations to come together and resolve this serious oversight of economic, social, and political responsibility and the consequence of their decisions in the Independence and Raytown area.
Mr. Day, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I appreciate the time and the respect each of you have given. We're going to move on with the meeting at this point and at this time, we've got a communication from the mayor. I'm going to take this opportunity to highlight a few things on this subject. I want the people in this room to... I, I want the people in this room to know, Mark Ulliot with the Y has been very good to work with. He's a good man. Nancy Winship with the Y is a very good lady, good to work with. These have been good, helpful people. David Byrd, we met with him today, these are, these are good people, and I appreciate you giving them the benefit of the doubt, these are good people. This is a, this is a business decision that we're trying to get to. But it also takes two parties to negotiate. We came to the table with, with numbers. We came to the table expecting to be able to do some good today. We got nothing. Instead, the numbers just started ratcheting up. So there didn't seem to be a willingness on, on their part to, to meet with us, to negotiate numbers, and when we felt there wasn't any hope, we put the number on the table that we expected, and it came back to us almost three times what it originally One other thing, I mean, I told you early on that the community, or the community has, has talked about community centers for a long period of time. We can continue with that, except that we can't do it between now and April 12th. The spot they placed us in eliminates us from essentially being a competitor of theirs. We can't physically move to get something in place by April 12th, and they know that. That places us in a difficult situation. The, the use of that facility is important to us, but, but the timeframe is such that it will require, more than likely, in order to make something like this happen, other communities had gone, had to go to a tax. For us to look at the different taxing mechanisms we could put in place, it takes time. It takes time to get on a ballot. The soonest we can get on a ballot would be August. After that, it's November. That's why we asked for an extension to mid-November, so that we could look at all this. But they're not giving us the time to do that, and that simple request today was, give us an extension. We were ready to talk about what the dollars might take for that. So I, I thank you for your comments. We still have a, a full plate on the agenda tonight. Please know that what you've said to us is important to us. None of us disagree with that, I can tell you that. We are as, as sad about this as you are. I wish that we could move something faster, but to do something and have it in place by April 12th, good design on the wise part. Thank you.